Oh, wow.
So.
We didn't want any.
Oh, wow.
Is that you smoking the bandit old or 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 Jane Fox?
No, just wanted me to.
Oh, oh.
Maybe you got.
Yeah.
Or Jane.
Yeah.
Maybe it does next, sure.
Okay.
Well, I was just. And I was over in Israel. I'm there for your. And so. And I want to help. I'm sure. There we go. Right up every time. My time crazy. I get shot. Oh, I don't know. Say, oh, wait, not now.
I know it was. I'm not with that.
But anytime.
There you go.
Yes.
Just chance to check my.
Yeah.
They put the robot shirts on and then when they got cold or however, there's like, and robots are. It's crazy.
You make that.
Feel your. I'm like, I'm having no, but mine. Get one of these.
Yeah.
There you go. No, thank you. We'll be right back.
I have a bunch of. Would anyone else like to? Yeah. You want cheddar popcorn, popcorn or regular? Hold on. She's back. Angela. Oh, yeah. I just had one of those sliding things right now. And I was so social. I know. I boil us. So I brought White Castle one today. I don't know what's wrong with these people. How did they not know where a White Castle slider is for goodness sake? It was like Natalie's like, I've never had one of these before. No, I mean, we ate that one at noon. I was eleven thirty and I was like.
And we'd be on sale. They had to do it in bags.
Bag? I bought the clutch today.
We didn't want to be around that shop. I saw this.
Yeah.
They got their name for a reason, didn't they?
Well, Natalie only understands Stafford.
No, I didn't even do that because our store only had hot dogs and chicken and that. We did that. Are we doing this on camera or off camera today?
I don't see why. What day are we seeing on camera?
I have it recording. It's just not be live. Oh. I'm hoping.
We're doing it out. That's our problem isn't.
I think so, so I'm gonna try it this time. And see, so I just have it recording right to the computer instead of trying to. Do it live.
Because so when you do it live, they have problems. You go back and see if you're recording and whatnot. Or just.
No, because I could maybe try that. Too, because it just records live and it goes right on to it. And then what that was, it flips over. That's why I always have to stay so long afterwards for it to finish processing.
So the the attempt here is report it to the computers and then we upload that. So that's. All the others. What do you think about?
Because that's what we're finding in the actual we do with that.
We played it back here. All right. Let's start. Seven. Thursday, February first, twenty twenty four. This is work session. City of Nowlan. We can. For the five of legions. Start to call it all.
Sure. Also member holders.
Here.
Also member angle. Legions invited. Councilman Fable.
Here.
Councilman O'Brien.
Here.
Mayor Pilar.
President.
Deputy Clerk Johnson.
Here.
And your city administrator, sir. Welcome to the.
Mr.
Councilman Brian. Second, Councilman Councilman Brian said by Mayor Pilar, the agenda is as in. Well, there. I have notes. Motion, Harris.
Mr.
Councilman Brian. Motion to approve a position. Twenty twenty four pending appointment of election judges for the twenty twenty four presidential nomination primary. Second. Motion, Councilman Brian, second, Councilman Fable. No discussion. Just to note, these are the judges we're appointing for presidential nominee primary. And the additional judges recommended for the next two elections. And those people, those are going to be brought over to the council.
Yes.
At that time. This is just. The other questions, comments. Hello, the David Motion, since I've been saying hi.
Hi.
I suppose. Motion, Harris. Okay. So. Thought we were. Through the first phase, last time we met. But there's still issues and questions now. So on to. You have a favor on personnel policy changes. First note here is that dates based on turn to review. Which we just got. Think we'll use before a full development title. So we need to put in maximum amount of hours.
Yes.
Now it grew new PTO into a negative PTO repaid. All right, so I'm assuming, having just seen this for the first time, you've debated. The paragraph under the question, Bob's response.
Right, yes.
And do we have another? So we need to come up with a record and analysis. Number two failed on termination. So you can wiggle responsibly limit the number of hours paid out. Yes. Take the number off the roll. Eight.
You would want somebody to go into the whole eighty hours. They could. Because that would be enough for two weeks payroll payout if they.
If the max is eighty, your last paycheck should cover it now.
Should cover.
That being said, you put a little favor.
I just don't think in in my world, I would have. Gone that far. Right, you know, it's to go backwards.
To your point, you're exactly right.
Yeah.
It's it's a it's a it's a guessing game. Whatever happens between. When you decide to go on vacation, how long you're going vacation and what could happen when you get back.
Right.
That you decide, oh, vacation was so wonderful, I'm just gonna quit and move.
It could happen.
It could happen, so.
But it may be all right to guarantee like. Have a good period of your own. We have a zero for three times. You're pulling me, but.
Right. So it could happen, you're right.
So. We, there's scenarios where.
Ask her. We can't see her. And it will, no. Uh. They want you to speak louder. Yeah. Please. Thank you.
So. Again, now we're back into the group then here. So, oh, you just got two hundred. Forget about it.
Anything?
What's that?
Only three years.
No, so this is not nothing to do with the role. This is pretty easy. So much time is reasonable if someone has a vacation in January first and then just got there.
And and this only happens for people that are just just getting there.
Okay, well, my next. They're they're carrying over forty hours. And earlier in the year, you haven't put that up to one month. You'll be the kid, but you could dip into this.
Yeah, yes. The I'm we're thinking the opposite being a big deal is people who haven't been around for a while and then they can watch.
So eighty hour could be too big.
Yeah.
Right, as I'm saying, if you let them develop the. I think hands life was eighty hours is when we cover that. Unless you quit and then over the eight year. So the question is, if you roll over forty hours, stick with that, starting with forty, seven. And you're accruing the hours of each.
Yes, like seven something.
So you're you're accruing a day of age. If you want to go to Florida, a couple of weeks, whatever. You could borrow against, but you're gonna be earning another day. Right, even even if you were. What question is in there? Forty or five?
Mr. Eric, can I add something? So some of the questions I got after the last meeting is clarify to me the the two hundred hours and and what was the idea behind that? And I think there was some misunderstanding or or people not exactly. If understanding what we were trying to do, there will be two hundred dollars. This would be a moot point if you actually save the two hundred hour carryover. Because then we won't have any employees that would be buying the negative because they would carry over. And then on two hours, I think at some point in tonight, we need to talk a little bit about some of the possibly, some of the. Misunderstandings possibly that came out and the question that have been proposed to you about the two hundred hours carryover, not carrying versus the forty hours. Um, that was kind of the reason that we put together some more of this information. If we were to take a look or or reconsider the two hundred hour carryover. That number one then would go away. We won't have people running the name. Like someone said. Second on that point, after the last meeting, I went out and did my own research and talked to multiple different cities and we. And provided the documentation and go, um, we would be extremely out of line with what other folks are doing. Uh, as far as carryover and that goes. And I would like to engage in the conversation on could that be reconsidered? And and. And could we reinstate the two hundred hour carryover? Uh, to be more aligned with others, I mean, even at two hundred hours, we'd be in the low end of what. Other cities are doing.
Okay, so so here's here's where we get this. Get this information last time. I've been in meetings ever since. I'm looking at a lot of couple of these that tonight as I sit at the table. So if we're gonna do that, and then I would like to ask the questions and make a sign. And think about it rather than there is not involved. And we have to come up with a decision. And I think this is, I don't, I'm looking at the sheet that we have here on other cities. And and I don't know how we selected cities of eighty thousand and like six thousand and five hundred. How would?
You put the message out to the group and these are the folks that responded to the question that hits.
I I got the problem. Again, typically, I have no idea. What.
About last meeting, we talked about, we said, we did it for the hours and we, that was the whole thing from the meeting before. So that's mine.
Well, we did it with the say. I don't like to try it. If you if you have the two hundred hour, we'll give you the cash. Not losing, we'll give you the cash. You bank it, you do it small with it. Do you want to take time off, take one? Go on and save it for sick, save it for sick. But it takes out the city's liability. To keep carrying everybody the two hundred.
Explain the liability to me, because I don't understand what that is or what you're actually doing.
If you look at our. Any. Room. PTO, that's the one books pay the liability. You have to pay that out. That's why I try our E and B right now. Is exposure, you can excuse. It costs the city, it is not you, we don't pay it out.
Okay, so let's.
So that's what I said last time. We'll pay it out. You bank. Rather than that it us continue to carry that on our books as a liability against the city.
But then our liability is also with our employees because we're actually punishing them.
Oh.
Well, if they recur that, and now we're taking that down.
Not taking it down, we're paying them up. If they leave, okay, I'm up. If they have two hundred hours, will they leave it down?
But if they don't. I mean, to have that, isn't that that a thrill and that blow over each year? So aren't they banking them for two hundred dollars? And if they are taking that away from them, isn't that punishing our employees?
Not taking away. Paying them cash instead. And they're not losing. They're still getting. No, they're getting. If we carry over, if they have two hundred hours of the end of year, we're sticking. Have like. And we say we're gonna carry over forty. Okay, here, whatever the number is, whatever the balance of that two hundred is, we pay them cash. They're not losing anything. We're just not carrying it on our books. They're responsible to put it in the state agency. Better all right than what.
Then why not do two hundred instead of forty? I still don't understand. Between, we have two hundred or we have forty, we have two hundred down, now we're going down. I just don't understand. I don't understand liability first, I don't understand.
Because because now we pay that down this first year, because everybody said the two hundred. Pay that down this first year. And now the expectation should be in vacation, usually vacation throughout the year. We're not wanting to do that. We'll pay out, so they're they're not losing any. In that first year, they still get the cash. So whatever. Thirty bucks a dollar times hundred sixty hours, we need that cash to put in. Any investment they want. Uses it. It's a patient's sake with that. And they're gonna accrue, yeah, remember, they're gonna be accruing. Eleven. Well, how would be?
The long time employees are depending upon the deal that you guys have talked about. If you're a newer player, you're earning three point eight hours of paycheck, so not quite a day of one.
The other is right.
If you're older one, if you're a long time employee, you're moving that eleven.
Seven hours paycheck. They're getting paid, they have a paycheck to rebuild that.
That was an unfortunate. And you're still going down. I just don't get it. I want to make your face.
Hey, I'll get it. I will, I'm challenged because we were talking about the attorney responses and now we're talking about. We've switched into how many hours can be can be blow over.
Well, I guess stat that says the last two hundred hours, this doesn't matter. But the.
The only way you're asking about that. It's the reason we could, if someone had five months vacation and got approved for five months vacation, they're using two hundred hours for vacation. It wouldn't matter for our rules, right? Because our rules would not have what that 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 today. So it does, it wouldn't matter for our ten years to go, it would matter for getting new letters. Ending their start date, almost they used that first year. But.
Correct, in in my case, I took it all in pay. When I took my vacation to Hawaii when I first started. I mean, if you know you're not, you're running part time. I mean, I was supposed to be part time.
Technically, at that time.
Right, I wasn't earning vacation.
Right.
But in most place, most places, if you get hired and you know you've got something coming up, you just negotiate that in and say. I know I'm getting married and I'm gonna take it on paper.
Or you got to take it on paper.
Yeah, yeah, that's usually how it's been done.
But someone didn't want to take it on paper and we let them go eighty hours to the negative, then that's a benefit for them.
It is. Yeah.
I mean, I think a little bit of separate use is long exposure.
Fairly.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think it's.
Very good.
Leave it at a, we can move on over to getting to the next discussions. Okay, hey, I I mean, that's mine. It's like, it's eighty hours, if you're exposure, worst case is. Essentially forty hours. So you're talking forty hours at. Twenty five bucks a day. Is. Versus, hey, somebody got hired in November. February first, they want to take an eighty hour cruise or two cruise or a trip or a vacation or anything, whatever. For that potential unemployed. This will allow them to do it versus. Not be able to go until June or July to like that vacation. Uh, or have to go on page, which may maybe that works for some people, but not everybody, yeah. When I was first married, I don't think I could take two weeks of pay.
Uh huh, right, exactly.
So I I'm fine with the details.
Final answer?
There's nothing to do with carryover.
Yeah, no, no.
This is number one and.
So.
Was that a, yeah? Final answer? Nick, Jim?
All right. Two, I think the political caps is not above. What time employees are standing, some section two A, holding data, who, when you think your limits, the last place. Back to them, funded, subject to political caps and what. Tax. Like it? Isn't it? And they carry over plus whatever they earn to that date. So this is where we go. You're gonna carry over, just carry like two hundred, just sort of carry over. And you bring another two hundred eighty on there. And then you decide, yeah, and then it makes it. And you pay us forty.
The policy that we had earlier on. In the policy, it stayed at two hundred and then recently it was crossed off and forty hours is in there right now. That's what two eighty states.
All right, that's what we agreed on in. Right.
And I didn't understand, I'm gonna, no, I did not understand that, like, I was thinking that was employees. And I said, I don't know if that's meaning if it's still the same for listed employees. So.
There we have the long destruction, as I said. If you're going to have this multi-tiered. Policy, that becomes a little more, that's what I said. If you pay out, give them cash, they can deal with the cash that they were. So we're not all good anymore. And then policy is consistent throughout. Is what we said last.
But then we'll punish you not for your employees again. I I.
You're going to get punished.
Well, it is a punishment because I've worked so many years and this is what I've accrued. And now you're gonna take that, you may pay out, but then you're gonna take that away from you, so I don't have that continuous. My husband has accrued so much, so now you come back and they're gonna take that away. These people have worked a long time for us. I just think that the two hundred hours should be still paid, should still be there.
So what are they missing? So they have two hundred eighty later. Right? So. Well, that is that changing what we're paying them?
What we talked about last week was taking, today our policy is two hundred, right?
Yeah.
So you have, I don't have a vacation, you accrue during the year and we allow you to carry it over up to two hundred hours. And we said. That's close to our house. Five weeks, five weeks. Seems like a lot to carry over. So. What do we think is a more reasonable amount for carryover? And if you say two weeks, eighty hours or three weeks?
We started at eighty and then we went to forty with flex depending on. What the situation was at the role time. So people. They say, take the, take a week off of Christmas time and we get some. We can redeem that.
So there's a wild question. Basically eighty hours carryover. So if you have more than eighty hours carryover today, true up, we will bring two hundred down to eighty, so we pay one hundred and twenty hours out. And then. Every. The next year, somebody tries to, if somebody has eighty hours of carryover already. That they burn all of the vacation or they lose it, or we pay it out at the end of the year.
And and that we had. Resolved. At that point, we said. The intention was to take your carryover home, whatever the food you're in here. And utilize those to get that down to the carryover.
Which will be eight. So I'm just, now we have some of our folks that set weeks, they gotta take nine of the months. They might have to pay. To be back to zero.
Be zero, that could be, that could be the zero.
So today. Somebody's got two hundred hours max, their max out on what we say is their max carryover. They go up to the end of the year. Do you pan out back down to two hundred or do they use it?
They, the force would work it down to two hundred before the end of the year. The max they could carry over, so I manage it.
If they don't use it.
Right.
So if you're carrying, if you're carrying over two hundred, you have to still use the two hundred and eighty minutes to get it. So you can throw it back to one hundred.
Yeah. Settle burning, settle weeks. And all the thing, what we said last, that was. Instead of us carrying that over. They can't, they just.
So in this scenario, every year at the end of the year. In a perfect, they would get a check for a hundred and twenty, obviously. Each of that.
They said that, no. What we're saying.
The first year, the first, the first year you, first year you're treated up either paying it out or you give them two years.
And that, and that's where the, then that's where the conversation's coming in. So I'll just share with you from a staff perspective for what it's like. The idea of having, first of all, they started with three hundred hours, the long term employees did. Then they were reduced down to two hundred and forty hours and now they're reduced, reduced down to two hundred hours. And now we're looking at forty hours with the discretion from the city administrator. The the two hundred hours. Is almost, I'll call it a safety net for the employees. If somebody's employed, if somebody's, I use an example, one of our employees, their wife get injured. And obviously, short term disability doesn't affect them. It's the short term disability, long term disability, long for the employee. If something was to happen, if someone's child was in a car accident and they needed to have some time off. There's a comfort level with having two hundred hours of sick time when the books that they were able to. Be with your child or be with their wife or whatever it may be, be able to bridge the gap until they come off of the plan. That that's what they're using their two hundred dollars. That's why they stay at two hundred dollars, they leave it on the books, they get the liability piece of it. But they have it on the books, so they are able to have some sort of a nest egg there. If something was to happen or they had an emergency. Because E and B now is gone. They had the ability with E and B to be able to utilize it. For an emergency with famine. We, they no longer have the ability to do that, that would say. We, they no longer have the ability to do that, that was placed by the short-term, long-term, and life insurance, which only protects the employee. So the.
Come and tell next year. The states have a leg here.
Now, I don't know if that's gonna be.
Excuse my chances.
Well, then maybe we discuss, maybe we discuss it then when we see what that looks like. At that time, and not now. That's, that was the sense, the consensus of the staff when we talked about it is, why the two hundred hours? Cause there is no, there is no, they're still now they have five weeks to deal with an emergency and their families, they need to.
Okay, so, so under that logic. If. If you're carrying cash. You stay. How, how would this?
Well, the only difference is if you stay, if you give them the cash, and they don't have the time on the books, if they're not in a paid status. At the city, they don't get to give their benefits, all that kind of stuff aren't affected if they're in a non-paid state. If they just took the whatever dollar long is, and they put it in the bank, and they try to cover the bills while they're dealing with the emergency, we're gonna run into a problem with. Employees staying active on the payroll to be able to continue to have their deductions taken out of it, and to have their medical benefits, and all that stuff. Still continue to pay back. Respectively, because what you're saying is. With what you did besides, they would only be able to stay into a status of eighty hours, like they would be in here. So my, my, this, my.
Plus, plus you gotta know what.
If you don't get to accrue, you don't get to accrue if you're in a no-paid status. So they would not be accruing the eleven hours on the paycheck if they're in a no-paid state.
No, but they can borrow up to eighty hours.
That's what I just said.
So they have a hundred and sixty hours. Well, I wouldn't call it eighty, you can borrow eighty. Over eighty, where are you, forty? Hundred and sixty. You carry over for eighty.
Yeah.
And then you borrow up to eighty, you just said.
Oh, yeah.
So you can have, you can have four weeks. Or five weeks. Difference is we. Plus, like I said, if you're accruing eleven hours of pay period. You get the day and a half. Yeah, keep that.
And, and all of this is being discussed, or used to, is to take liability off the books, that's the whole purpose of it.
We have a very small staff. And this is gonna make a huge difference to Alan. That I say we can get two hundred hours, because the thing is, is. They, they care for our community, we're not a huge community. And the thing is, is these guys work a lot. And if they, if they used to be three hundred, and then they were down to two fifty, now they're down to two hundred, now they're doing forty, we are taking things away from them. And that's how they're gonna see it too.
When was it three hundred?
I don't know, that was just mentioned, so I just.
That's where, that's where it was first started, uh.
Township?
I was made, uh.
I know, it's two forty, and, but I mean, that's. It's two hundred today, I think the question is, do we want to get the two hundred down to eighty, or? Do we think it's worth the climb? The information that I have, it's gonna be a challenge hiring people by, by changing it to go down anymore, when I see that. Um. New cities, just as an example, uh, like the city of Zimmerman can carry over a thousand and forty sick time.
There, there again, we, we, this is the problem we have before, this is why I don't like the information being. You're talking a half a year, so what I know is.
I, I, I understand that.
You can carry over a full year. How is the best yet?
But Mr. Mayor, last meeting, we did the same thing, a thing was presented to us at that meeting, and. That was the same thing, we got it at that meeting, and then we voted on it, and. So we're, we're doing the same thing now, it's, it's, every meeting has been that way, including last meeting, so.
No, but, but we.
But we voted on it too, so I mean, that was something that I regret now, when I'm looking at everything.
But did you have, did you have the, the information before the night of the meeting?
Yes.
No, I would say no.
Last night?
Last.
Last time, when, when, when you came with the revised version of the P T O time and all that we were talking about. That was different from the prior meeting, and nobody got that until you presented it to us through the group meeting.
Does that matter to you? That was like back in the week before.
No, what you presented at the last.
Last time.
Only did I present it last? Only for that, very. No, you presented the change to, to carry over forty hours and they have figured out.
No.
Well, that is, especially the past, right? That was the new part that I believe there is. I can't see going under two hundred right now, if people can be carrying over. Two hundred, two hundred and eighty, two hundred and forty, five hundred and twenty. It's gonna be. A, a challenge hiring people who, that we need to infusion.
And I think it's gonna be a challenge with the staff, yeah. I don't wanna lose any of that.
Yes, you know, the lower.
Well, then, by that logic. Let's just be everybody on board.
I went and talked with the staff. I asked, I asked, I asked staff for a meeting with the staff, if I can.
Alright, but if you're not authorized, you go outside the council, directly on the right of the staff. But if you wanna say you go down with staff, that's fine.
Why can I not ask some questions and understand that?
You can. We should all go in, we should all sit down with staff, ask our questions, and that's fine. If, if we think this is gonna make it hard to keep the staff at the app, it's hard to hire staff, okay with it. But by that logic, and we should go on this. How would I find that sheet and meet everybody on there, so that we are the best, but there's also a reason. That you pay fifteen hundred dollars. You factors on three hundred thousand dollar house in those cities. And you pay a thousand dollars in taxes on five hundred dollars, see it. If, if you're going to match them and match their taxes, I don't agree with you, but. As, as it was said, this is not the hill to die on, do I go two hundred? Two hundred, two hundred, I say go to them. But if we're gonna all go lobby staff. And rewrite the policy, and then based on lobbying staff, then why do we need?
Okay, I resent saying lobbying staff, I did not go lobbying staff.
I'm sorry.
There was a question that I had about it, I asked some questions, and then. I was, then I just said, you know what, if this is an issue, I wanna see what the staff thinks, I asked some questions of them. And they gave me their answers, and I went, thank you, that was simply, I didn't lobby them, I had questions as a console member.
That was a misstatement.
Okay, that's fine, and I just wanted to know as a council member.
Did you also go ask me, tax payer, no business? But you have to be careful with, Jeff, because today's policy is two hundred hours, and I said, go with the two hundred. So our tax base. For residents isn't gonna change based on this policy, because it's no change from one of this today.
No.
So. I want to, it's not like they're saying, if we make this change, people are gonna pay more in taxes on their own, it's no different than what we're doing today. So that, ask us, do we wanna do it for women today and keep that, or do we want to hold it? And if we think from an engagement standpoint, we have. A handful of staff in the first. And the liability is low, do you think the engagement outweighs what we can get out of it, and? To the team members, they'll, they'll pretty strongly, I mean, I, I look at it and like. It's a lot different than in my world, so it's a lot, but I also look at. Like cities. Some have more, some have less, it doesn't feel like we're totally out, like, what we, what we're saying, we're. And I would certainly say, we are, if, when state F M L A, or if you're like M M F, a lot of it.
F M L A city?
State version gets in?
Yeah.
It's, cause today, F M L A is, you're guaranteed your position, but you're not paid for it.
Right, no, I understand that, I was saying, if the state's doing something, if the state's implementing their own plan, we can revisit the next shift.
Probably give enough of you of this to share.
Can I ask clarifying questions? Did I? Did I hear correctly? That if a council member wants to talk to anybody on staff. That all council has to be present for that conversation?
No, that would be a point. I'm just saying, if you're opening up, so we can all go clear to staff on things. Then I would expect you are gonna get council members all clear to staff, thanks to C N. And, and if that's how you want to handle it, we've been very careful. That council doesn't direct other than. By policy where it's written, doesn't direct staff, if you're okay with, although let's call it two staff and asking questions. I just wanna make sure we all know that, so if we have individual questions regarding policy or opinions of staff, that you're okay with us coming in.
Everybody in this room, to include their removal, has done it, has called and asked for a policy question, has talked to staff. Has engaged staff in conversations, has access to research information, everybody in this room has done it.
And so, so we can.
I just wanna be clear, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to create a.
No, I'm just saying, I just want to be.
As long as it's clear.
As long as it's clear, we can all go in and talk to staff. And ask questions, and, and direct them. To research.
Okay, this has to do with what I did.
Not in the real, in the work. Well, no, he's saying that we have, we had a council member to direct staff to do research.
I didn't direct staff, I went and asked, that's all I did, and said, could I please ask some questions?
And I'm not saying, I'm just saying, as long as we can all do it.
But I went through staff. I went through and, and respected his position, and I just said, you mind, and, and it was fine, so because I. Wanted to see how.
You can say it's okay. As long as we all can do the same thing, obviously, it's the same access to staff, I don't care. As long as we can all do that.
Because we all have.
I don't know what I have.
That is very, council.
You're thinking that not all council is coming in and talking to my staff on a different topic here, there, but where we drew the line was is that no council member directs staff. To do any work on their behalf, that needs to be run through the city administrator, will prioritize, when we can get it, if somebody's got something on this to research. Or work on, will prioritize, and put the work direction for the staff coming from me. But if we're talking, now it has a, has a council member come in and, and talk to staff, I didn't.
About policy? Has every council member come in and talked to?
We didn't, that meeting, that was not talked about policy, it was, how does it, how, how do you feel about some of the stuff that's being touched on?
In house.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll wait.
Says, has, has the policy been voted on?
No.
Okay, so you're going in as a council member, and something the council hasn't decided. And giving opinions, as long as it's, it's okay for all of us to go get staff opinions before we make policy decisions, I don't care.
The policy that was talked about for the P T L, the carryover, was decided for last week, it was voted on, so it was on the books. The overall?
This, this isn't been voted.
The overall, uh?
We, we, we have not voted on. Phase one.
We have not voted on the total phase one, but you guys most certainly voted on it at the last meeting about the P T L table and the carryover, and that, that was voted on.
And that's where I had questions, because I realized afterwards, and reading some things, that it was. Wasn't just staff coming in, but it also affected staff that was there. And that's where I am.
And that was, again, the discussion we had the last meeting was. We had talked written by Grandma. It was just the staff. And when staff didn't, wasn't by me, but it was like, why don't we just clean it up? Hand it up, and join in the same here, we decided we don't wanna do that, so we leave this dead horse, we say two hundred hours is two hundred. And you wanna go two hundred.
Right now, I'd say let's just leave it as a.
And you wanna go two hundred, Jason?
Yeah.
All of us go, two hundred hours, you're at two hundred hours, and then. And then I would say. I guess I'm gonna change the one I need, that was just people that don't have the two hundred hours carryover. Which really won't be actually first year, after that, pretty much everything. So, the first one, you, you couldn't technically. Have two hundred hours on the books and still borrow eighty hours. If all in six weeks. Okay. Alright. So anything else on that list?
That, they, they're about.
Hey? Well, we got the two hundred hours carryover, and the only other thing is the. Again, we had a brand new sheet today with another recommendation on. P T L.
So what we were trying to do with the P T L is, we went back to get what was recommended in December, I'm gonna call it. Jason had a lot input in the, in the December meeting. Um, then we came to the last meeting, and I'm the, I don't need to be amusing you, but then. The mayor came, and he had a different version of. The tables, if you will, on how is it approved and installed, and so. And then. I took a look at. My, let's put together a version of what. Might help bridge some folks that are in the middle of the years to be able to do it, and I used that kind of what. Council member Rainbow was kind of thinking, when she started this a while back, talking about some of this stuff. That maybe we just don't do it as week chunks, maybe we take a look at, it's gonna be, then it should light it up, and you don't have to wait X amount of time to. To get to the next week, if you will. So in the middle of the page, if that's what we're all looking at, is the red one, so the top one is just what we had today. Before we started the salt process issues. That's, that's the, the table. Then, the middle table is just my recommendations, if we wanted to do something there, there's been. Further discussions around P T O and accrual and all that, um. From others, there was still some confusion that came out of that meeting, um. What was shared with me is that there was. When we sat down in January, and January ninth, and took a look at that, um, they were seeing, council was seeing that for the first time. Um, going forward, and.
Shared with you by who?
By the council members that I talked to.
So, so could the council member share with the council? Anyway, that's fine, so you, you had a discussion with council members, and. There was confusion on what we agreed on in January.
There was, yes.
I, I don't think anything. If the people agree.
I think that's what tonight was designed to do, was to have the conversation, because in talking to the council members, every. Council member had a different version of what they thought they heard that. And some of them weren't necessarily prepared to have that discussion, because they were seeing the modified. P T O accrual for the first time at that last meeting, which was different than the one we previously had. So then, when they had time to process it and take a look at it, they're like, oh, I didn't think of that, or me, and so the whole idea was trying to get near, Mr. Mayor, was. To have that discussion, to get everybody's questions answered out there, because I just provided information. And, and, and the consensus was, let's get that put on the table, and see if we can't come up with some sort of a. A, a solution.
Yeah, on the side here. What I'm gonna recommend and going forward is, because we keep getting information at the last second, because they're doing this group thing, what do you think about this, we. My, my issue's been here, my company's done this, and you throw all these numbers out, and put it together and say, okay, we agree, apparently, you don't agree. I'm gonna ask in the future. When we put our numbers together, and we take it, like, until people get a chance to look at it and say, oh, I now understand it, and now I can vote. Because we voted, but apparently, they didn't understand very well. Because we talk about too many numbers. Because we talk about too many numbers. That we're only getting. At that meeting or this term. So we have some numbers, we just got. Do you like them? We can go with them. Um, again, without context, I don't know we. We aren't going four weeks or long days, it looks like, in this. Again, I'm seeing it for the first time. As we sit down here tonight. And. If I sound frustrated, it's because lack of information becomes a group thing. And then we're not quite sure what everybody just said. So at least here we have something in front of us. If you think this is good. At least it's in writing. We don't have to discuss it much. If there's any question on it, then we should table it, take a look at it, ask our questions. And revisit.
Mr. Mayor, I don't disagree with that, but when we tabled it in December. And the comment was made, let's sleep on it. I got zero input from anybody from the December meeting to the January ninth meeting. And then when we came to the January ninth meeting, we were presented the same way we're being presented here. More time, because this was out yesterday. Can we do a better job of backing that up? So you guys have more time to look at it, fine. I am, I can, I can get on board, that's exactly what you're saying. But we, we brought the new proposal to the January ninth meeting after January ninth meeting. It wasn't in the agenda, it wasn't in the packet, it wasn't presented to the city administrator or discussed with the city administrator or any other council members.
I, I was going to say that the numbers in the January ninth meeting, Mary's numbers that she put together. The numbers we came up with was because we sat at the table and said. Mary's got these numbers, we got some numbers from other cities here. We had. A collective information and we tried to make the best out of it. Nobody had the information to pull that because. We had Mary's recommendations or, I don't know, we had Mary's. Research.
Good.
And we had some. Comparables with other cities. We had our numbers that we had. And so we tried to say. Uh, that the aid that we had here jumped from. Tables. Yeah. And so we were capping out ten years. And so the question was, that seems a little aggressive, what else could we do? So it got to be a group thing. If it's not this aggressive, what's less aggressive? And so these were. Considerations or concessions to saying, okay, it's not as aggressive than we currently have. It's not all, we're not capped out after ten years. And so this was a concession that nobody had because we're making it up at the meeting. With information that we're just. Getting. And so, um. It would have been nice to have some time to process. Your recommendation compared to what we agreed on in January. Because I don't think it's that far off.
Sure.
But as a person who processes slowly. It, it makes it a challenge to say, I'm not quite sure what I agreed. To your point, Shane, that's what we said about. You weren't quite sure it was agreed, but we want to make a decision tonight. And one of our members doesn't hear. So. One of the options is we accept. Administrator mayors, recommendation, or we take the process and say. Okay, you got a whole kind of thing about this, but. Sit here and try and evaluate.
So. Can I just add one thing to that? So. I'm just going to speak for myself on this and I, and I think council members are pretty much sure. Be sure to do that, it's fine. But when we came to the last meeting in January ninth. I would just say for myself, I was under the impression. Since there was no more thing, no more conversations with city administrator, nobody asked me to run any other numbers, anything different. I believe at that meeting, um, and I think I stated it at that last meeting, that we were going to come and approve. The December's numbers. And we didn't. And so I didn't have my packet of information from me and I think it was all a little bit in that meeting that. I didn't look like I was prepared when I came to that meeting because I didn't think it was up for more. Conversation. I thought that, that, that proposal that came out in December was what we were. Going to be proposing at the meeting. Because there was no communication with me from anybody that there was any changes, that there was going to be any more versions of PTO coming forward. So when that came forward, that, when you presented that mayor at the January ninth meeting. I was a little caught off guard because I wasn't prepared for that conversation. Because there was no dialogue from any council members that there was going to be anything brought forward to reconsider.
And on top of that, I just, I like that we had things in front of us. I like that because it was hard to be able to, as we were doing that, to get my mind around what we were actually voting on because I couldn't see it in, in print. And that was my. That was the biggest thing for me.
I will say, that was a meeting. September fourteenth. We closed over Christmas. Or maybe people had a week before Christmas to get some information that. Um. Maybe we weren't all processing this amongst everyone else, we were no men of you. And. What we were dealing with. Was. Various iterations of what Mary does. We're, are still processing, here's what other cities are doing, here's what Minneapolis does, here's what Spider Company does. And. And if we have recommendations, it should go as a recommendation. This, that you gave us tonight. Is a recommendation. This is something tangible we can look at and say, okay, my only concern is. I'm processing it amongst everyone else we're doing.
Right.
And we just went from. Is that your name, are you?
Um, actually, because we're not allowed to speak, I'm sorry, I just was. At all, sorry.
That means you can't pass enough, I have no idea what you're passing.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It is a business meeting. And again, what happens is we go from Bob's letter to. Kind of jumping from the pool to. Dancing vacation to now we're talking about. Actual PTO.
So help me understand then, how would you prefer to see this then? So. Use more of what your expectations are then, because I was having a great little work session. To bring some of these things so everybody can. Talk about it and discuss it around the table and we try to get it out.
I think after January, it's just like we had a problem. We started talking on the table and then let's show what we agreed on. So, yes, we were told we had a pack on, I understand people consent. Um. This meeting was primarily to get the election judges in because we have a deadline. These other things, convenient for having an election judge meeting and say, let's put this in there too. It would have been nice to have this a couple of days ahead of them and say. Here's what we have, here's what. The proposal handed out in January ninth, however, we came above. Here's what I over. And then we don't have a chance to say, you know what? That makes some sense. We have a tangible in front of us, we can calculate how different it is. And then everybody can see what it is and say, yeah, that makes sense.
So if I went down on the center this week, whether that.
Would they usually? I, 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 I struggle with getting things at the meeting. To try and process comparing one to another. And because this is what I got to work on last night. So I'm working on this. And it looks like duty fits. Stepped it on one nine, except stepped on twelve fourteen. Stepped on one nine and approved on one nine and. Fourteen, so I'm looking at charts here. That don't match what you just got. So this is what I'm looking at. So now I have to change gears from what did we say in December, it's January and now what are we proposing tonight? How are we going to do it?
Well, and I think that has been the problem is that every time we nut, there have been new numbers. Out, and so when we got to last week. It was more, or last time I should say, it was just another number, but we now have paper in front of us this time and so. And there was a lot coming out, so. That's difficult whenever we come to their, we're talking about their conversion, which I understand we're working through it. And that's for work sessions for, I get that, I, so I understand what you're saying. And.
Well, and that's where I try to keep it up on the screen, like, okay, what, what was just said? Put it on the screen, so it was at least. We didn't have a hard copy, but it was, okay, what was just said and update. So everybody sees the same, and this is the, but I agree, I, I get very frustrated with what I call routine. When we start throwing out ideas and numbers. And inevitably it starts getting late, we just. To make a decision on that, and that's really poor, very decision. So. First and foremost, the more information we get ahead of time, so that we can prepare it, so, okay. If this isn't it. And we start changing numbers. And I think to that point, we should say, okay, we just changed the numbers. Let's settle it in, talk about it two weeks later, we can have it right. So we have time to process, ask your question, we'll say, this makes a lot of sense, I like it. Even if it's. But if we don't get it ahead of time and we start changing. If we go in here and get it accepted as in or modified, that would be modified.
Right, and that was the problem that I was having last time, because it was just. I'm thinking one thing, I'm seeing numbers, this is, I think it's thirty, things have been changed and so it's like. Just a lot of information. And going through it. But then we went ahead and noted and it was like, and then it was afterwards, and yeah, that was my problem, that I, I take full responsibility to that. Because I voted on something that I wasn't. Sure of, because I had heard it differently. And then what if I said I didn't have something right in front of me? And so. And yes, it may have been on the screen, but as it's on the screen and numbers are changing, you're trying to follow that and you still don't have anything. So we didn't have time to.
We couldn't think of that. Hacks with the, under trouble.
Well, we didn't, we didn't.
But.
It's because we had time.
But to that point, I think every council member needs to be able to say. I can already score. We just go through a bunch of stuff. Let's put it in writing, get it in front of us and then talk about. That.
That's fair.
To your point. Because otherwise, yeah, if you don't go back and watch minutes. Or watch the meeting, what can we just say?
Mm-hmm.
Because I threw the meeting. I have to go watch along these, what did we do, so, so. So I, I will say to each council member, if we get to that point, we start, start throwing. Whether it's numbers or information, what did we just say? All the time out, say, can we get that in writing and bring it up? Because then we can avoid. That frustration on council's part, on staff's part. Because if we disagreed on something that we didn't really agree on and now we're sat all upset because we do a lot. And council won't do it, I don't think. Because we're not sure of this.
Right, and then what hap- happens is our staff watches our meetings too. And then they, they do get upset, depending especially if something affects them and. Just so. Everyone realizes, so they know why I did it. Because I'm on the personnel committee, I do walk in and hear about staff and I do ask them every now and then how. And so that's why I did it, because I was like, wow, this was in that fact. So I like when things are like this, when we're going through so many numbers and it's changing so, especially with this personnel housing. It's changed and changed and changed, that's. I think it's good to have, and so I agree with you that. We, once we discuss that, yeah, maybe we should pay a little bit at certain times. And I will want the one to now raise my hand and say, whoa, let's take a time off, so. Absolutely.
Because we're learning, so that's good. So we can get. So I just got my numbers put in front of me, I just, looked pretty reasonable, but I'd like to. Look at it and compare it to what we talked about in the bottom. And so I would like to table this part of it until we can. Various chances, we have a good chance, we'll get it. Ask any questions and then come back and say, which of these iteration do we? Is that the six? So we're at hold with these two variations.
Well, you've been on it.
Well, that's where, well, I'm saying, and we're going to go, so what we talked about January ninth is what we, I would say January ninth is what we got from staff. So.
So the two box, the middle one and the bottom.
So that we're all lined up. See the bottom box for the middle box and we're not going to have. Any other. They're not going to be a box C. Middle box for the bottom box, these are two choices. So basically, well, it's, again, having this even in the box. I'm assuming that's a good. And I mean, just. We all turned it right there. But if I come up with that. If, if there's a, I think that, if there's a box C. Somebody has a recommendation for a box C. Mark it up, send it in, Scott has got, send it out to more.
Do that, please.
So that. My recommendation is, if there's not a. Change to one of these two, this, since it's got, before our. Packet was on the next meeting, but we don't consider. I was going to ask, starting over, new meetings, I'm good with that. So if you don't like. Middle or bottom. You don't like middle or bottom and want to make. A minor operation or anything else. Get it to stop.
Are we signing on, do we have enough time between February, between tonight and. Getting to finish, getting the packet ready, to have, if we're literally saying the next meeting that we're going to talk about this February thirteenth?
We have to have it to early in the week. Get in the packet. Because next week will be packet, we'll get the packets, we'll get it out.
If anybody has a team, though, it has to be as soon as possible. Yep, right.
Can I just add, just comment thirty seconds on that middle box? All I was trying to do was, is do something a little bit more on the front end. You can see how I kind of split it out, I didn't change the fourteen plus. And, and I just put the twenty seven in there to give somebody that's. Here during that, those time, that did something, something to work towards. And that's where I use the Mary's version of maybe we don't just go week after week, so I went from twenty five to twenty seven to thirty, but I think. It's pretty consistent with. Um, with the bottom box, which we'll discuss at the January meeting, it's just, what's a few more breaks. And discussing. A little bit of this with council members. The conversation was maybe we can do something a little bit on the front end, spur renewing boys. So they got a little bit there and then what would be the. Recommendation for somebody that's been here that six to ten years?
And then just back of it?
Mm-hmm.
Really think. Yeah, this would be mad at six to ten years, it would look like now.
You're right.
Wait, wait, what? Wait, what, going right now, six to ten years, it won't wait anyway? Yeah. So we have.
And I think the other part that. As council member, we need to like. Consider for this year as it's changing the state of Minnesota, we live in this. Sick and safe is including these numbers. Were in the past. What's that?
Yeah.
We weren't.
Wow.
Never had. Never had sick and safe. The iteration of if you needed time off, we had PTO.
Yeah. My, my point is when you look at. Sick and safe of forty eight hours. At someone, at some other pension company, yes, and fill that into here. People have, other, other companies have vacation and then sick and safe is to the side. And we're providing that all in the two. One, which is totally. I'm fine with it, like you just look at the numbers, you gotta look at it a little bit differently on. Does that make sense to push this forward or pull back out? Because you're adding that. Sick time in the state where it has.
I'll just respectfully disagree that it wasn't, we added PTO that would cover.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
The big difference is to find, is for those people who wouldn't qualify for PTO seasonally, but kind of. Experiment. Okay, so. Okay, so we're in table, let's talk about this council level. If you want to change this table, the middle or bottom, get it scotted.
Oh, go back then. Is that all we're discussing regarding the review of phase one?
Well, I don't have a list.
That's, well, you're also the.
Alright.
We still have a, we have item number five?
We have item number five. And and I'm going to, again. Based on. Our discussion this day. Again, I picked up my packet last night. And I went right to a meeting through there, and meetings all day today. So this afternoon, before I came to this meeting, I was trying to go through these numbers, and Scott put on this packet here for us. And we got a slightly revised one with that meeting tonight.
The only thing that changed was the color. To show that Scott's does not have, he has no merit increase, only full of increases.
So you guys didn't pick up your packets, and there were studios who picked up his packet.
My packet was right under.
This is all, this is. They changed your packet.
It's the last sheet.
I picked up mine, and then I realized I wanted to change something, and so I changed all the packets. But I have the old one, that's what we, so I called him. Questions to him.
But this is not accurate.
No, it's still the same, the numbers are still the same, I just took the, like, the thirty, not of that.
So anyway. I would like to be able to look at those numbers. I also asked Scott. Because we have. These expectation, highly means. Proceedings partially, and I would, I would appreciate if the council could see what we do most of the reason. And and again, strengths and areas of improvement. Thanks. For the best areas of improvement that decades will come here, but to give us some perspective on. On on this. One of the things that we had discussed previously was. Trying to move our staff. Into a more competitive range. Within the numbers that we agree on last fall. And again, I don't want to confuse any of this, but we agreed to replace older budget. Three point five for cola. Two point five for merit increases. The understanding that merit increases based on the reviews, to try and get our personnel more commensurate. With what we budgeted, where they really are competitive. I think our public works people are way long the scale. And so. Depending on how Scott is reviewing people. I think as a council, we should say, if you can put merit increases in there. To reflect that. And try and move them up, be aggressive on that. And so that's why you see some inconsistencies with merits. Obviously, you can, you do calculations there. I think that some of the other things we've talked about, potential changes in. Finance, they were doing a finance, we were doing a building official. Potentially should reduce. A fair amount of overtime. But as you look at these numbers, there's a lot of overtime. Uh, in some areas. And. The adjustment there was to try and bring public works up, I still think we can be more aggressive on public works, but right now we want to think on budget and numbers. In Scott's, we can see he went from one oh one eight fifty. Uh, three percent, three and a half percent brings him up to one oh five. And we get another three and a half percent. On Scott. Last year, we had thought it's kind of a five percent on its total, but the understanding you get another five percent. Uh, potentially on interview, so if we work that in, that puts him. In, you know, budgeting numbers here, about a hundred and ten seven, so make up for it. Uh, last year's, this second half full. And so we've done a lot of them code this year, bring as well to a hundred and ten seven. So those are the numbers you're seeing there. Obviously, you're like, I didn't do math and see what it comes out to a merit basis. But what Scott has prepared here, these are numbers within. Are projected, but. You get allocated. They could choose to. You also saw in the packet that. Uh, we get asked. And how does this, what does this look like when compared to? Uh, current inflation rates. Uh, right now, Fed reserves pushing to get near an annual target of two percent. They think it. So far this year, they're, they're on target for that. But based on last quarter of last year, they were like three point four percent. And so I think our three point five turned out to be a reasonable number. Along with merit increases, going just because base payment. Uh, I think we need to be aggressive in our coming budget to better on that. But right now, we make the six percent increases that we agree on last summer. And and it just is a pretty reasonable proposal. I can say, I'd like to see the. Views of it, but I think the numbers reflect, since everybody's looking at this. How can they do, and I'm voting on it tonight. I would like to say, look at it, ask your questions, and then this will be on the agenda.
Um, could you please explain to me what we mean by um placeholder and? If we choose to distribute them by the order of that?
When we do those budgets. You don't know. Summer of twenty three, what twenty twelve. So we've always tried to remind people that. This is a placeholder in in a budget. The coal increase is a placeholder, we project might be with them. So last year.
That might be what?
A good number based on how the economy, we're, we're gonna be six months out when we're actually. So if the economy took a. Real strong turn. And inflation's down below the Fed reserve target, two percent. You're gonna see a lot of people getting three and a half percent. Now, you might take that money, turn it into merit increases, because you think other, other things can do the bottom. But when we, when we do that, similar to. We might put a placeholder in it for truck, take a look at our cattle. Those are customer targets, and we're buying a truck in two or three years. Right now. We think that trouble costs, based on the last two years, it's gonna be up here. And now we're talking, so truck prices is gonna be that, so put a placeholder in it, then. We might put four hundred thousand dollars in a truck, and when we go and buy, it might be three twenty. We don't have to go spend four hundred thousand. So it's not. It's something we've always tried to remind people, when we've been in the budgeting segment. This is not a guaranteed three and a half percent raise in next year. This is a placeholder, maybe it's gonna have to be at least that. But we don't think it's gonna be. But if if the economy. Completely changes around, it may be that. Three and a half is a less. If if we have an economy left to turn.
And. As far as.
You can, you can see on here, there's his.
Yeah, and you see that, so I just. Uh, my other question though is. There'd be different views, and then I wanted to know.
While you're thinking about it, I can just ask a question to verify, so. Provide performance evaluations to the whole council, so the council can go in, indeed, apparently, if I do. I'm good enough to do the performance evaluation, and that you're gonna read my ratings and.
No.
What I'm projecting for next, I'm just curious on.
No, w- w- why? I have no idea.
Why would the council want a whole performance evaluation? Maybe that's a better question.
Okay. I have no idea how we're doing it, I don't, I don't know what. Formula, you don't know what tier you're using, and as we talked about before. The objective, you know, performance review is identify the strengths. Identify personal improvement, and that sets some objective goals for the kind of. So, just bringing us into that, because we have no idea what impact we're using, or how we're evaluating.
So you wanna copy of my blank performance evaluation form, so you can see what I'm doing, or are you looking to look at? Verbiage and. And and what I put down, and then have the right to challenge my review that I put down, that that.
I'm not looking to challenge, but I would like to see what it was. But I'm not gonna challenge for that.
The overall, the whole review I did, what the verbiage and the whole.
It's it's the. Not to challenge, but just to see how it is or not. What kind of feedback they're getting. I I personally think that was something where you messed up with. What kind of feedback they're getting. But uh, and the understanding is, we've done the reviews, we've had the.
No, I stopped there because I wasn't sure what we were gonna prove, they have not, the reviews are done, and. I stopped at giving them to the employee, because if any of these coal was gonna change, as part of the review was, this is what their coal is, this is what their merit increases. This is what their new hourly rate is gonna be, and since that wasn't approved, I did not have the evaluation, they're all done, they're typed up, there are recommendations. But I stopped short of providing it to the employee, because I didn't wanna give them what I thought was their review and their increase, and they come back.
The assumption, I thought she said they all be done by the end of the month.
Yeah.
So if you sit down and look at the reviews. And they point back and say, I think I did better than that, and you say, here's gonna be my recommendations, and they push back. And you say, you know what, I agree with you. You might wanna change the numbers. So I assume that you already have that, people were content with their review, they got whatever.
So I will say this, everybody on staff knows where I am with it, but I have not had the official sit down, they know. But I didn't do that, Mr. Mary, because I didn't wanna have to go and provide something to an employee, and then all of a sudden have to take it back, I think that is.
No.
That's why I stopped, once I got the reviews done, and I put them into my spreadsheet, I have them with me tonight for anybody that wants to take a look at them. But that's where I stopped, because I didn't wanna go and then have to come back.
No, I mean, this alone, you know, this is already a public document. And. The understanding is we. We targeted three and a half and two and a half, and you stayed within that. So that's not the question. And so if you decide to within that, these are the recommendations that you would make based on the reviews. The only thing that, I assume that you guys, we had those discussions. It's not gonna change that, you're gonna write what you wrote. And. You're gonna have that discussion, we're not gonna change it. It just would be nice to know, and sitting employees, what is? What's that look like?
Their their review may not change, and I'm not gonna get any pushback from my employees, I know all enough that they, their reviews are fair. But what would be subject to change is the dollar ones, if the council didn't approve them, and that is part of the performance evaluation, is how much is my cola? At the end, at the end of the performance evaluation, it calls up coal, it calls up the merit increases, calls up all the new hourly wages, who did the review.
And so, and and again, so when I said that. Do I have my merit? No, that's what you did. So what do you wanna be changing?
When I, when I read documents and say. It isn't a given, it's a placeholder. To me, that tells me there's something possibly to change upon cost approval. If I would have known, when I came to the January ninth meeting with the resolution stating, I'm looking for authorization to spend. Three and a half percent on cola, two and a half percent on merit increase, if that would have been approved at the January ninth meeting, that I would have no. No issue whatsoever, given another performance evaluation. When I said I'll have performance used done by the end of January, I meant I'll have it typed up, have a sheet done, but until somebody said, go with the dollars, I did not go.
So.
I could go tomorrow, that's.
I will say, when we, when we view the budgets again in this year, we'll say, here's our placeholder for next year.
Sure.
And and what you did here, is you want to look at. But it says, inflation at twenty twenty three and a three point four. Fed reserves targeting two, so you gave some, that we gave you to say, why that placeholder makes sense. That's what we discussed before, saying, we don't think we're caught off at three point five, based on what the economy is looking right now.
So you would have been fine with me. Giving them all their performance evaluations. And use these numbers. So I'm here.
Again, because I don't know how to do that in in my world, you do the performance evaluations, and this is set. But they say, here's, here's your performance, it's not tied to cost of living. Because you, I'm making the argument, the cost of living, if they budgeted three point five, I can justify it. Three point five, so that's separate from the performance review, now, you're saying, based on. On uh, performance, it affects the merit. And that's why we separate that, what we say, we could go back to. Cola. And. My recommendation was we back pay the coal to January first, and merit after they actually get a review and they understand why they're getting. The merit increase.
So that's where I'm confused, then, because last year when we did the coal increases. Um, I was authorized to spend X amount of dollars on cola, and then adjusted as I saw fit, so then when I did the review, I was able to put it. Put it in there, this is the first time that we're dealing with. A merit increase on top of that, so then maybe I need to modify the performance evaluation that doesn't have. The cola and the raise and all that kind of stuff in there, because in in the world I come from, which sounds like it's different than you, is. I don't know why I would want to have to sit down and have two reviews with somebody necessarily, I do the performance evaluation, their rating. This is your raise, this is. Any feedback you have an area here, you can put down in it, here's your, your, your cola, here's your. Merit increase, and it's all one conversation, uh, I can certainly do it anywhere you guys need it, if you wanna make it two, I'm just trying to be more efficient enough. But to go back to the cola from last year, if it's three point five percent in there, to go to it right on, and we couldn't, because last year it was five percent. And not everybody got five percent, and I needed to get approval, depending upon what their rating was, on who was gonna swing which way.
And and again, last year was, it was unique, because generally when you do a cola, it's across the board. Right, right, and then. Yeah, yeah, in my world, the only thing that changes that, that might change from line market to senior.
Sure.
Sometimes it senior gets less because they think. Typically, it's across the board, last year was unusual, because we were, we were trying to correct. Efficiencies that. And so, instead of just uniformly giving everybody five percent. You were authorized to say, I can tweak this over here. We never had discussion of merit, so. Boy brought up this call.
Right.
So that's the first time we've ever talked about. Previously, it was cola, and you, you decided. The discussion last year, it would make sense to. My, my total cola is this. I'm gonna get a little more here, a little less there. And and we were okay with that, this year, the assumption is across the board, those who qualify before we give them. And then merit, because we separated a different number for that, that was based on. And because we're still trying to make up Rome. So, but I don't, I don't think it need necessitate a second review, it's just. Oh, by the way, you can put a note and check, and write it in the hand, and do it. And merit, they had a distance.
So what you, but be very clear, what do you want me to provide you when it comes to the performance evaluations, and and everybody getting the same thing? And you want me to put it on paper, so we have reviews floating around emails, or you want me to bring it? How do you want me to move forward with that? I'm hearing that you guys wanna see the review, but what what does that look like, because it seems like sometimes I miss the mark on the expectations.
In in the past, the. The council has has seen. Staff, we, we closed meeting, we had a discussion, we take a look.
That what we wanted to do?
Please have that way, the whole council say, looks great, keep up the good work, I'm. I'd like to weigh in on this. Process.
Good.
That when I go weigh in on the evaluation, necessarily, you know, in the past, I have been, but. At least weigh in on the process, and say, okay. I understand how, because again, this is a learning process. This is the. We haven't. Done the success of the years.
So.
So I still haven't, still hasn't heard you.
Well, I'm trying to understand, so just so I understand, so we're looking at. The blank review of what he, how he goes about his review process? Or we're looking at the reviews that he has done? Or we're looking at the reviews after he has done the rooms.
That's part of.
Close meeting, discuss personalities. Kill any items, yeah, it's a great process. Ask any questions at that point.
Scott, I have another question. As far as um. Do you look at? And this is just for my own, um do you look at what wages are in similar cities?
Uh so it's to the to the extent I do, um but I think when the next piece after this is, and I wasn't gonna bring it up tonight, but I will sense the acid. I think uh part of the notes I took from the last meeting was. Is we won't have a wage study done before this one, but maybe at some point we consider doing a wage study and kinda sliding everybody and see. I think the term was, are we ninety-five, are we a hundred, are we a hundred and ten percent, what does that window look like when we compare? Job write-ups and job titles and all that kind of stuff. So um I'm not prepared right now. Or even this cycle, if you will, but I think if that's the will of the council, that they wanna have some sort of wage spending. As staff, we can look into that and and start the ball rolling on that one if you want.
Well, and Mr. Mayor, you had stated to me that with uh. With our public work staff, um you would be the kind of that you wanted to give them up and I, so I was just curious on on what wages were.
I think the mayor just knows in his head from all the years of these statistics that he's done, that he he looks at those numbers and say. I'm not sure I'm gonna get a Joe Glaze at this, or sorry, excuse me about that. I'm not gonna get a public work supervisor um for that wage in the world we live in today. And maybe he does some studies of his own.
And you might have been in trouble, we we kind of almost started in the past, we say. Responsibility is responsible, because sometimes we go and say, what's about the works director and why is that? And we don't have silver, we don't have water, we don't have, all these things they have, we don't have, so we try and say light cities and light responsibilities. And how is that compared? But as I'm looking, and I go to a lot of meetings. To the local government officials, I talk to a lot of people, how we um. Uh other mayors, we we start looking at. And what people are doing to retain or attract people. And what used to be a reasonable wage isn't it? And so if you ever think somebody's gonna retire. Win a lottery, need to be replaced for whatever reason. And their way down here and commence starting salary up here. You're gonna make trouble. So rather than have that, they jump. Places, I'm like, start to worry about now. Formal study will tell us what it actually is, and I'm worrying about like. My informal conversations with people.
And we do it internally on staff too, as the mayor's doing his part in front of it. Because we've been put on a deal and we will get information out from other cities. But some of the issues that as a mayor state is, is sometimes it's hard to find a route well smashed. And if the most cities who are an hour is is one of those things that we just, you know.
And yeah, and you have to see well. Yeah. Well, waste waste treatment, we were saying fences and they got a lot of the waste treatment. They got a lot of stuff we can add, so we're not that.
But the one thing I would say about that is on those cities, I mean, is you do that have also individual people that are responsible for each part of the company. Where we, here and now, you know, I mean, in a city who are one, we're married both to different acts and that.
Waste is. Well, that job is one of the, yeah, and so you can say. This packet plus this is.
So.
Well, I have a question then, I'm wondering, so. What you're saying, Mr. Mayor, is we are going to table this, we're gonna discuss this again, and you're gonna get the reviews and we'll look at them. Also, what I wanted to ask with this is. Because it looks like these numbers are based, when I'm looking at staff's wage. I'm wondering, we're not at that, so. That is based on his review, I'm assuming, so. Where.
So can I speak to that for a second?
Oh, sure.
Okay, if you guys. Public sheet outlook, like, I'm gonna give you the real high version, because I'm not having up to the explain queue before we get. On camera at the next council meeting, and I'll do it very quickly. And I did it for the mayor today just a little bit, um so I know I can do it fairly quickly, so. When you take a look, I'm gonna just go through real quick, so when you take a look at the first person, the first individual all the time, I don't wanna use any, the public works. You're gonna see that his increase, uh everybody got their merit until I get down, they're already, so. So this individual got their merit, that's where the dollar, or the cola, excuse me, the cola. And that's the dollar one, and then I wanted to, wanted to propose twenty-four, get him to do a certain number. So that's when you see the three point nine percent increase and and why that one is lower. We all know that that individual we're talking about, we had something that we had to deal with over the summer. And he's fully aware of it, we talked about it, but I need to take that into consideration when I'm taking a look at his overall. Comp uh compensation and his overall rating, so if you take a look at his rating there, um. Okay, and so then I would go, uh so you could go through all the individuals that way, and this is where I was trying to get to. You can see some of the percentages in there and their ratings, um so. The merit increase, you guys see in the R C what total merit increases, so I won't call it up, but you see what the total merit was set aside, okay? What I took a look at, and I'll talk about myself right there, is, and the mayor rooted to it. Last year, um if you take what the cola was that was slotted for me for last year. And you take three and a half percent cola, which is everybody's slotted this year.
Wait, I'm trying to catch up, so just give me a second.
So last year's guy got a cola.
Okay.
Five percent. So that took him to a hundred and one eight fifty.
Do you want to say? Okay.
And we have talked about review period of time in which we could increase that.
Okay.
If we chose.
So.
We didn't do that, so we take a hundred and one eight fifty. And we put a three and a half percent on in this.
Okay, are we doing that with or without a review is what I'm.
Doing that with that.
Okay.
And and so. Um that puts it at a hundred and five four four one.
So why is it thirty-one ten?
Okay, oh, because. We're gonna go back and say that the view we didn't get last year, we're gonna put another cola on top of that. And that takes it from a hundred and five four fourteen, a hundred and ten, it's just name. Or making up a last year.
So the the key to that, and the mayor didn't get done explaining, the reason, how I put the sheet together, is that. If the council would be. So inclined to be able to entertain that idea. To get to your city administrator to that number, the the one ten six ninety-one, that will only be using cola from last year. And he referred to in cold for this year. That merit increase, that that ten thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars of merit that was set aside for staff, your city administrator will not be utilizing any of them. I would consider this a fair compromise. And then the dollar amounts that were set aside for the merit were totally used for all the staff.
Staff.
And and that's what I did on the spreadsheet, so if you were to approve the spreadsheet as it is with all the dollar ones. To include myself. We were within the budget, that was budgeted for, actually, I didn't use all the merit, there's still some merit I found there. Um. Uh. Just here, uh this is what mine has. Okay, so, um but that would, so that would be all the budgeted numbers. And the merit would be used for my staff and not for myself, and we would just be allowed to go to get me that number, and I think. We would be good. If that makes sense. And I just wanted to lay that out there, I wanted you to understand my thought process when I was doing this, so. If I don't have another opportunity to talk to you before we get to the November thirteen, or excuse me, to the February thirteen meeting, we don't have to have all this be necessarily.
No.
That's your question. Yeah, yeah, we would, and I'd probably be without a whole lot of employees probably.
No, thank you for that, thank you for explaining, I know Mary you explained it and I was just, I wasn't bothering you, so thank you for explaining it.
Everything within the budget.
Other questions? Like you said, the idea is. New new information, I think it's pretty straightforward. They're trying to process it.
And the only thing you need to read in there is the very performance evaluations in the February thirteen meeting, I'll put it in the back here, but I'm discussing there. If you're considering public meetings, so we can cut reviews, is that on there?
Just confirm it, Bob.
Okay.
And then, then you can do it before or after they. Anything else on that?
Any questions? Or I'll come over there, yeah, I know it's long, it was, I mean, there's very many. And you're the one with the day, give me something.
I have a spreadsheet. Can I ask a question? So are you guys, do you just look at the reviews, it's not gonna be a packet of information? That you take home, you just, you close it, I mean, you have it right here, you could look at it, you sign off on it, you sign up for the process. Because we did it very, very different last year. And just could use a lot of the.
That's all, no, we were, we were taking, I don't know, we used the same process last year, this year. But we leave that some in, understanding of how it's functions and and what. That would be the discussion, waiting. Cursor review was having the back change damage. Show us what you're doing.
Okay, but everybody was gonna copy.
So do you want me to say, so you're okay with me from now till then? To sit down and give them the reviews?
I have reviews both ways. Where on, I have my review on a state of your, and I have other reviews from other companies, where they said, here's your review. And then several weeks later, it's all, here's where it just. So if that's something that we need to clarify, like a procedure, then going forward, then we probably do that. So here's how things get laid out.
But I think that's part of. Why we have that especially, so okay, here's here's the more robust process from full. Great as it is, here's a tweet, and the council gets to say, okay, through all, and because again, they haven't.
And and it's, and it's like everything else, it's a matter of timing. If the reviews are done at a state and then we want to get everything done by this date, we have to figure out. How to get everything in the lineups, but we can get it done as in the time frame that we expect the.
So one thing I'll make comment on what the mayor said here is a dragon, probably to be other than that, and we're kind of learning how to go here with the process. But one of the, one of the things, just so you are all over too, is is most cities aren't. I haven't come across any other city, so get, in in the research that I've been doing, talking to the other city administrators, that. That do it this way, typically, if the money's in the budget, the administrator does the review, the review gets done. Councils, council gets notified that these are, these reviews are completed and these are the overall ratings and and that, so if. So the way we're doing it, if you guys wanna have an employee, wanna see what the reviews look like, all that kind of stuff, that's fine, it does make it a little. Everybody just be aware that that, what we're doing here in the city of Maryland isn't the normal speed, uh it's.
Well, hearing this, I'm not as close as he is, I'm glad.
That's fair, I just, I I'm not saying it's wrong or anything, and I'm not complaining, I'm just saying it's different. So.
I think that's a matter of processes. But I think some of it is just like, what is the? What is the base process and so, and then beyond that, once we have, hey, this is the process we're using, this is what we have, this is our review process. Going forward, is it more? Bring us two or three volts and merit exceeds, bring us two or three volts on your. Does not need and what's the action plan and why and. You know, the team typically has a good appeal for. Group because it's very small on, yeah, that makes sense, and exceeds or superior or whatever the rating is.
Yeah.
And if it does not need or needs improvement, it's like, yeah, let's see that, keep this as long, so I think. I agree, I, I don't need to re give the place reviews, like the five bullets, like, I think it's great that we understand. What is the process that we're using, are we all comfortable with that, if we haven't been through it at the time, and. I think just right from the past, we've probably been pretty lax on reviews in some years or well with the process as well, so. We have, we have a good process appearance to whatever review looks like and what goals are, and people are aware of that feedback and. Give us some bullets on why is A will be or C will be.
Yeah, so Jersey will be. Right, anything else? One that I commented in one of our previous meetings that. This group who came and passed out postcards of lower integrity, they said. Uh we did a presentation in overall this week. Um would like to come. And give a forty-five minute presentation required at council meeting. Council will be like. Willing and. We could record it, but could like, we were well in. Come get a presentation, and I'm talking about motor and saving, six specific things that want to postcard the end of. Played a real nice presentation in overall last week, if I can do that, other cities have to take it. Some of the presentations here, so. Uh not a mandatory thing, but the first council to sit in on it. We would have to make decisions as to their request. Requested resolutions that have to do with old beds and. Our daddy books and bowling places and things like that. The recommendation, and we're coming down, so you're doing this, so um. And also game of that, and you'll, you'll work with Scott to. Six five. All right. Okay. Now, that that being said.
I would say that was funny. I'd like to apologize for not knowing, we weren't allowed to speak for anything, so.